Move on to H2 unaudited actials and Mr. Bonet is here for us.
So, we recently have closed our books that still need to be audited. And I have a slideshow presentation, I'm not going to go through the entire SACS report. So, I've included a legal sized form for our multi-year projections. It looks like this, and I'll be referring to it throughout the presentation. But, real quickly, on this multi-year projection, there'll be a simpler one later on in the presentation. I'm going to focus you to just below the midpoint going down in the 1314 column, where it says net increases, decreases, and fund balance. In the total column, you'll see a negative $1,328,000. That was deficit spending for 1314, and I'll explain some of that to you later in the presentation. But, you see, as you go across that line, it gets reduced in 1415 to $360,000, and then $207,000 in 1516, and then by 1617, it's $132,000. So, our total revenues for 1314, this is a graphical representation of our sources of income. $4.6 million in LCFF, $654,000 federal revenues. I won't read the rest of it to you, but you can see graphically how our monies come in to the district. And then, a graphical representation of how we spend our money. And the biggest slice of the pie, of course, is in certificated classified salaries along with the employee benefits. So, what has happened throughout the year that maybe we didn't foresee? Well, one of the things is, we had to make a larger contribution to our food service program to the tune of $126,000. One of the reasons for that was the food that we were serving to our students. Our students, they weren't quite happy with that. So, our sales had gone down, and our applications for free and reduced-priced meals also went down. We have changed vendors this year, and I have personally been out a couple of times to both school sites and have enjoyed wonderful lunches at both schools. To the point where if you show up late, there's not going to be any left. So, they're selling out of lunches, both at the high school and at the elementary school. And they're working on a daily basis with the executive chef from Sedexo and meeting quite regularly with them.
I can report, an N of 1, my second grader, two thumbs up on the new vendor.
It is, there's a, it's huge, there's a huge difference between last year and this year. So, we're expecting the sales to go up and the free and reduced-priced meal applications to increase.
On that front, I asked Ms. Dunn that very question tonight over at the high school. She said, she thinks we're up to 75% from 64% free reduced lunch currently.
That's a nice size increase, we're back up to where we were the year before.
And she thinks we might get even a little bit more in the next month.
One of the other things, we also made a larger contribution to our special ed. But, part of that was because of the change in the funding formula with LCFF. There was no contribution of taxes this last year as there was in the revenue limit years in 1213. So, we did make a larger contribution to special ed. The transfers out, again, child nutrition, it totaled 234,000. We had originally budgeted about 170,000. Again, it increased about 126,000.
If I can just interrupt you since you're on those two items. On the last slide, does that mean, so between those two, we spent 200,000 more than we had budgeted?
That's correct.
Okay, so our deficit increased 200,000 over what, just based on those two items?
Well, the, yeah, I'll get to that a little later. The special ed really was a switch of income sources. There was no income inflow into special ed as there was in prior years. So, it makes it look like we had a larger contribution into special ed. But, and it shows that we made a contribution above what we had budgeted by 72,000.
And I'm so happy you used the term contribution and not encroachment. I want to thank you for that.
That's all, nobody uses encroachment.
Uh, no, you'd be surprised.
There are, there are people that do. So, again, this is a simpler look at our multi-year projection. Again, in 1314, $1.3 million, and I will go into detail what some of that consists of. So, there is progress with bringing that amount down. And that looks shocking, but once I get to the, some of the future slides, you'll see why. I do want to talk a little bit about 201213 and us being basic aid.
The one year.
The one year, we were basic aid. That kind of put us into a little predicament with the state of California.
Yeah, and just for folks watching at home, we were bumped up one year to a basic aid district because of a statewide settlement of a redevelopment misdirection lawsuit that sent us a couple of years of back backlog of redevelopment monies that schools were supposed to be getting that they weren't.
Several years, not just a couple of years, it's like seven to 10 years of backlog.
Which, for that one year alone, pushed our revenues into a basic aid status, which we then fell out of immediately the next year.
That's correct. So, at the beginning of 1213, if you remember, we were looking at making extensive cuts. The governor, on his back, passed Proposition 30 in November of 2012. With the passage of Proposition 30, that gave us and established the education protection account. So, there were additional taxes collected throughout the state that was given specifically to schools, and it specifically had to go into classroom, into the classroom. It could not be used for administrative salaries. And I want to remind the board that in 1213, it was the last year of our revenue limit funding model. So, at the close of 1213, the state, the county, and the district did not know how to treat those EPA funds as they were applied to basic aid districts. So, as we closed the books in 1213, we knew we had over-collected state aid because of the amount of taxes that we had collected. So, we set up an accounts payable back to the state of a little bit more than a million dollars. Well, at the time, we closed the books, all those entries were correct. However, as we go to close 201314, the state was recertifying P21213. So, it takes the state some time to recertify revenues earned in the prior years for school districts. So, what the state did was they treated EPA funds the same as revenue limit funds. So, what that meant for us is that they overpaid us more. So, instead of the state aid portion of the revenue limit in its calculation, with this new Proposition 30 and the EPA account being established, they counted those dollars as part of state aid. So, that meant we owed the state more money. And we did not know that until August, as we were closing the books, August 2014, as we were closing the books this last year. The education code that this is, that is referenced is 47632, and that became effective June 20th, 2014. So, it took the state a year, excuse me, to figure out, oh, we can get more dollars back from basic aid districts because of this, and they did.
So, can you go back to the slide before? So, we, we treated...
We treated state aid as, as we would any normal year, and as basic aid districts do, when you're overpaid by the district, you have to pay that money back.
So, were we supposed to have paid them back 1.529 million instead of just 1 million?
That's right. Because they threw in the EPA account in, at the end of 14.
What constitutes an overpayment by the state being a basic aid district?
So, you calculate your revenue limit dollars, and part of that calculation in the past included just state aid, prior year adjustments, and then taxes.
Property taxes.
Property, local property taxes. So, when your local property taxes exceeded that state revenue limit amount, those dollars up in excess above that, if, has to go back to the state, out of state aid.
You got a basic aid amount, that's why you're a basic aid district, like 120 bucks a kid or something.
That's the minimum.
Yeah, you didn't get the full revenue limit you got, because you're getting so much more than that from your local property.
Right, so all of our, all of our revenue limit dollars came in, in 201213 as property taxes. So, in excess of that, we had state aid, which we knew we had to pay back to the state, and also the EPA account in the revenue limit. And since it was new in 1213, like I said, the state, nobody knew how to account for these funds as it related to basic aid districts.
Well, if it wasn't, if the EPA wasn't, you're saying we treated it as revenue limit? Or we treated it as, yeah, we treated it as revenue limit that...
We were treating it as, as taxes.
We treated it as, as if it was our local property taxes.
That's correct. It wasn't a, it wasn't a factor, because it never existed before the end of 201213. And those EPA dollars weren't a portion to the district until June, between June 20th and June 30th in 2013. So, as we closed the books, we knew how much we had just received in the EPA account.
But, the, and you're saying at the time, it was correct, maybe go forward one slide again. It was, it was correct to treat the EPA as taxes. But, the state changed the law in June of this year to say, no, 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 that EPA stuff, that was revenue limit. So, if you're a basic aid district, you owe us more.
That's correct. So, we ended up owing the state about 1.5 million dollars.
Well, no, you said we, we overpaid.
Well, right, but with, with the 1 million that we set up as a liability...
Yeah, we ended up owing them 1.5 total, and, and we'd already paid them one, so we had to pay them. We had to, so we took 527,000 out of our reserves, is what you're telling us, that we thought we had.
Yes, and I'll get to that.
And we just sent it to the state.
That's right.
I thought, and I guess this is a different point. I thought the state was passing legislation to hold harmless districts like ours that had become basic aid districts, at least for purposes of LCFF allocations. So, and I, it might, they might say, yeah, we'll, we'll hold you harmless for that, but we want this money back.
That's right, and that's what they're saying.
Are we being held harmless for, for having, because we don't want to get it both ways. You hear, take your money back, and hey, we get a lower amount in LCFF because you're counting us in basic aid.
I think we are, I have to go, because we just...
You think we are what?
Being held harmless.
Okay.
So, I need to set up another meeting. We've had a couple of meetings, one over the phone with the county office of ed, and then one face-to-face, Dor and I have gone up there over this matter. And now that the books are closed, and we have all the entries that we can look at now, we're going to go back up there and confirm all this information.
Now, as I recall, when we were, you know, jumping for joy at the settlement and, you know, becoming a basic aid, we, we, we made out pretty well. We got extra funds we weren't necessarily anticipating, like a million bucks or more, right?
About a million dollars, exactly.
Is that right? So, so we're turning back like half of that, you know, bonus, is one way to think about it? Is that...
Yes, it was like a one-time bonus, that's correct.
Right, it was a one-time bonus, so maybe it's, we still got some bonus, but not as big as we thought. Is that the net kind of effect?
So, we were overpaid, we do owe the money back. We're just making sure that all the entries are correct, and our fund balance is reflective of, of what it should be. And I believe it is, but I just need to double-check that again with the county office of ed and go over all the entries again with them.
But, going back to the day before the settlement in 2012, we're still better off than, than we were.
We're way better off, yes. That's correct. So, back when I did the second interim report, we were expecting a deficit of 730,000, and I, I showed how some of this was planned spending, spending down of the parcel tax money, and then the one-time payment at the time for ETA. So, and the cafeteria contribution that we knew about. So, our deficit spending was really about 168, well. So, our deficit is showing, the top line is 1.3 million. And then, what I've included in here, some of those one-time things that we didn't know about, and they are one-time. So, the 126,700 for cafeteria fund, the one-time payment to ETA, the one-time payment to CSCA, the parcel tax, we bought new computers. We knew that was, that was planned, so that reduced the ending fund balance to 194,000. Then, we had a one-time settlement of 4% in 1314 to ETA. We're still negotiating with CSCA, and that brought the ending fund balance 145. And then, the repayment to the state that we didn't know about, the 527. So, you can see that most of that deficit is all in one-time expenses. So, that's a good thing.
So, we actually paid the repayment back to the state aid, for the state aid? We've, we've cut that check and sent it back to the state?
Well, it's showing up as a payable.
Okay, that's fine. What about the special ed contribution? It's, it's not in there?
I'm excluding that because it was more or less a shift from revenue limit sources, and now it's just coming out of LCFF as a contribution to that program. So, this kind of helps explain that large deficit spending, and a lot of it...
Can you go back one slide to the interim second?
And this was at the time of the second interim, so things changed.
I was trying to, the deficit was 730, the parcel tax one-time was...
At that time, 210.
To, to just a parcel tax, it's a negative there, so that's like, we're, we're...
Right.
We're paying down the deficit with the parcel tax contribution, I mean, is that what that means?
No, we're, we're exceeding our expenditures, so we're taking monies out of the ending fund balance and putting them in expenditures, so we're increasing our expenditures without increasing our revenue. So, I'm kind of explaining the deficit of the 730, and that's what I'm doing with the 1.3.
So, is that more the, just to go back, I'm sorry, spend more time on that slide. So, that's basically, we hadn't planned on, there was not, it wasn't budgeted at the time, but we ended up doing a one-time, we made the decision to expend those dollars that were in the fund balance previously allocated there and not allocated for spend. Wasn't budgeted to spend.
The 527,000 was not budgeted, the 126,000 was not planned or, or budgeted. The agreements with the bargaining units was presented to the board with multi-year projections and how that was being funded. So, at the time we made those settlements, we knew the effects on the ending fund balance.
So, you know, for me, deficit and budget is more, I've been sitting here long enough to know the difference, so I appreciate your breaking this out for me, thank you.
So, basically, a lot of the deficit spending for 1314 was due via negotiations.
Uh, yes, except with the 527,000.
And the straight, state repayment.
So, that's one of the reasons why Mark wasn't jumping up and down as the deficit was being presented to the board.
And the multi-year deficit slide that you showed, which starts at 1.13, you don't have to go back to it, but the, write that one, and then ends at 132. So, in, in the out years, I guess in 1415, 1617, 18, do those, remind me, do those include the negotiated salary increases, at least as projections? If not as, you know, agreed to?
The ongoing does, yes. The only ongoing...
On salary schedule.
The only on salary schedule we have given is 2%, and that isn't reflected, where am I? In here, because we received about 2% increase in 1314 to give, whoops, to our units. So, we weren't going to propose a salary increase unless it could be funded.
But, bottom line, it's the 2% at least in the multi-year projection.
That's correct. So, the SACS report for all funds, here's the listing of the fund balances. We have a zero in child development and cafeteria fund. Because we do make a contribution to cafeteria. General fund is 3.7 million, deferred maintenance is 15, it was 30, we've, we've spent some of that. Retiree benefits really has been unchanged. The bond building fund is at 50 million. Capital facilities, which is the MOU 1 and 2, and developer fees is 3.2. And the bond interest and redemption fund is at 2.5. I will have you reference back to the multi-year projection, the long sheet. And if you go down to the components of ending balance, which is the very bottom section for 1314, I'm going to point you to the line that says reserve facilities, MOU 3. These are accumulated dollars from redevelopment pass-through that are non-revenue limit. We, some of those are restricted, and I'll be presenting the, to the board information with regard to that account and the RDA loan, and how both of them are linked, and how we can use some of those dollars to either pay down that loan and/or use it for other purposes.
So, this is not a general fund, fund balance? This reserve for facilities, it's not, it's not in the general fund?
No, it is in the general fund. Those dollars come in the revenue, in the general fund.
Okay, they do come through?
In other local revenue, yes. They're, they're a pass-through, and I will explain that in much detail. If I get the information prior to the next board meeting, it will be on the next board meeting's agenda.
Okay, so it's not a capital project fund balance, a capital project funding in the general fund, fund balance?
No, but it is restricted for facility purposes. And I will explain that in detail.
See, well, my concern is, is having a capital project restricted, expense, fund balance in the general fund, fund balance. Because, for me, it overstates the fund balance by this million that can be expended on unrestricted or restricted programs. Does that make sense?
It's restricted to facilities.
But, I guess my question is, why isn't this in a facilities or capital project fund balance? And taken out of the general fund, fund balance?
We will have, I will explain that at the next board meeting. And what our options are with regard to those dollars.
Because, like, again, for me, it does, but for me, it's just, it overstates the fund balance in the general fund as far as what we can spend on general fund purposes expenditures.
Well, that's why I have it, that line item reserved, so.
And just to reiterate the comment that I remember doing, basically, it gives the impression to our unit members that we have a lot of money sitting that's possibly available when it's actually not available and restricted. So, I appreciate your comments on that.
Yeah, I want to support that fully.
The, the, the units do understand the sending fund balance, and they, they're well aware of what's reserved and what can be spent on negotiations and what can't.
And just to note, I think the, the fact that there's this section, components of ending fund balance or ending balance, is only a recent thing for this district. And I think it's, I'll just note, it's very appreciated to be very clear and transparent about where these dollars and funds and sources, because that hadn't been the case four years ago. So, just want to appreciate that and appreciate the explanation, and we'll look forward to further discussions on that point.
And lastly, I'd like to thank Dora Sue for her hard work with getting the SACS report together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Dora.
Great job. I just want to commend the both of you on looking at the multi-year projections and really reducing the deficit budgeting in these out years. I mean, because from adopted budget to this report right here, you've cut our deficit down almost $500,000, so...
Well, that's because of Mr. Rubio.
Well, great job, you know, and it alleviates some of the stress on this, you know, for the community to think that we're in this deficit mode, and, you know, we're in this stage of not having enough money to run our district. Because it clearly shows here in 1617, we have about three, 2 to 3 million dollars still in our fund balance based on our expenditures. So, that was a really outstanding job, getting that deficit budgeting down in the out years. Makes it look good.
And there may be ways to reduce some of the deficit this year further, but maybe only one time using those facility dollars.
Great, good job.
So, on that point, are the budgets, the multi-year budgets that we're looking at based on the, I guess, current state of affairs, assuming our current staffing and other expenditures are in place going forward out to 1617 with no changes?
That's, that's correct. It's, it's, it's the way the staffing is now. That's correct. It's the way the staffing is now and what it's projected to be.
At current salaries with the 2%.
That's right. The...
And the revenue side is just...
Is based off the... The LCFF multi-year spreadsheet.
On the reserve balance, the RDA loan, am I reading it right? That that is showing that it would get paid off, you know, down to zero?
No, it's been used to help offset the deficit spending.
Uh-huh. Oh, so we still have an RDA loan?
Yes, and that's what I'll get into in hopefully the next meeting.
Okay, and also the city 40-year lease, that line item, can I explain to you that?
Yes, we can talk about multiple changes to the components of ending fund balance because of the signing of the LOA. JOA. The JOA.
Joint Operating Agreement with the City.
That's correct. And what else do I have here? Yes, and the reserve for facilities.
Okay.
Yeah, that's worth more discussion, so I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions regarding the...
Well, I was just going to say, I think it's...
Unaudited actuals.
Just one comment I had, I know, is the fact that transparency has always been our hallmark, where we strive to achieve, and I think it's been so improved over the years. And I just, I can't reiterate enough. I've heard deficit spending, I've heard deficit budgeting, and I think every time we close the books, we realize it's actually deficit budgeting. So at the end of the day, I appreciate the authenticity with highlighting one-time expenditures and that decisions the board and the district has made to, in terms of negotiations, highlighting that information is very important. So I appreciate that slide that I didn't see here, and I was like, well, there's something to this, right? So I just wanted to, you know, express gratitude for you and the team putting that information together and providing that in great detail for the public and for the board's benefit as well. So I just couldn't reiterate that more. Any other comments from board members on that?
I just want to, again, reiterate and say thank you both to Mr. Bonet and Dora Sue. Thank you both for all the work.
Thank you.
Look, and at this time, is there any public comments on this particular item? All right, thank you. And we'll actually now move into, oh, and we do have this up for approval, sorry about that. So of the unaudited actuals, do I have a motion to approve?
I approve the 13-14 unaudited actuals. Yes, oh, I moved, I'm sorry.
How did I feel?
Streamline everything.
Thank you, Ms. Ash.
And I know Ms. Tameri will fix that for us at the end. So is there any objections to the motion in the second? No objections? No, you said no? Oh, no, no objection, okay. I was like, okay, wait a minute, how do I do that? But so, Ms. Tameri, would you mind recapping that action?
Yes, the board approved the unaudited actuals. It was moved by Member Dwin and seconded in by Member Ash.
Thank you so much. Thank you again, Mr. Bonet.
Thank you, Mr. Bonet. Good job.
We'll now move to...